Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President, and I'm joined by my colleague, Jacob Frye, councilmember from Ward 3. And before we start our meeting this morning, we have the honor of presenting a resolution to the De La Salle Boys Basketball Team for their victory in the state championship. So I'm going to turn this over to Jacob, and I wish you guys would come up, if you would please, and kind of half and half, staff too, if you would, so that you can get on TV.
Right here, right here. Hey, come on in, guys. So we've got the De La Salle Boys Basketball Team now here for the third time in a row. Now, this is their fifth, this is their fifth state championship in a row. All right? That's a state record. It exemplifies not just, it's not just impressive, but I think it exemplifies absolute dominance in the state of Minnesota over the last five years. You know, and as much as I like North High, my apologies to councilmember Belong Yang, these guys are the AAA, not single A's, they're the AAA five-time state champions. And just to kind of give you a difference as to what that means, I myself was the AAA state champion in the two-mile with a time of 9:17. The, so 9:17, the single A's state champion won in a time of about 9:55, so AAA was better than single A in that instance. And so I'm so unbelievably proud of these guys. Their academic accomplishments, the team has an average of over a 3.0 GPA. Out of 215 kids at the school, 213 of them are going on to college. The remaining two are serving our country in the military. So De La Salle undoubtedly has a very impressive record here. Additionally, Coach Thorson had just got his 500th career win, something I know that the president is very proud of. And so I'm just going to read the resolution here. This is honoring De La Salle High School Boys Basketball, 2016 Minnesota Class AAA State Champions. Whereas, De La Salle High School of Minneapolis won its fifth straight Minnesota Class AAA State Championship on March 12th, defeating Fergus Falls 79 to 65. And whereas, De La Salle is the first high school in the 104-year history of the Minnesota State Tournament to win five straight boys championships. The 2015-16 team finished with a record of 25 and 4 and were champions of Section 6 AAA prior to winning the state tournament. And whereas, head coach Dave Thorson now has a career record of 500 wins and 133 losses. In his 22 years at De La Salle, the school has qualified for 14 state tournaments, won eight titles, and finished as the runner-up twice. Going back to 1927, De La Salle Boys Basketball Teams have qualified for 47 tournaments and won 22 state championships. And whereas, the team represents a microcosm of the entire De La Salle student body, the most diverse private school, private high school in Minnesota, defined by every possible demographic, including socioeconomics, race, neighborhood, and family background. The 22 players and managers on the team came to De La Salle from 18 different grade schools, parochial and public, including every neighborhood in Minneapolis. And whereas, all six Islander seniors have been accepted to colleges during Coach Dave Thorson's career at De La Salle, every senior has matriculated to college, every single senior. Whereas, in alphabetical order, the team's rosters included J.T. Baker, Dominic Bledsoe, Sage Booker, Jack Borman, Christian Dixon, Philip England, Max Fleming, Cooper Ghulie, Robert Hanna, Will Irvin, Sam Jones, Gabe Kalshor, Malik Lemmon, Gonar Mar, Austin McGarren, DiMario McGowan, Ray Kwan Moore, Patrick Paudwills, I apologize if I'm messing these names of guys, Jamison Short, Tyrell Terry, Coltech Stevenson, Kevin Wassa?
Wes.
Wes. And whereas, in alphabetical order, the team's assisting coaching staff, including Todd Anderson, David Collier, Class 99, Nicholas Gru, 98, C.J. Hallman, '02, Janelle Hallman, '04, Tim Muir, and Dan Robischko. The team's trainer was Cindy Schlafman, and the strength coach was Chris Hartman. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Minneapolis City Council that the city of Minneapolis congratulates the De La Salle Boys Basketball Team and coaches for winning the 2016 Class AAA State Championship, by the way, for the fifth straight time.
Good morning. As the president of De La Salle High School, it is really an honor to be here to not only congratulate these players for representing our school and the team, but also the city for producing such a fine quality of basketball. So we're proud of these young men for the good work that they do, and we're proud of our place in the city, being on Niclet Island right downtown where the birthplace of Minneapolis. So thank you for having us here and giving us this opportunity to represent this fine city.
All right, we should introduce, let the players introduce themselves.
So we're going to introduce one at a time.
My name is Christian Dixon, Class of 2018.
What's your favorite subject?
Oh, my favorite subject is Monroe history.
My name is J.T. Baker. I'm a junior at De La Salle, and my favorite class is Advanced Placement U.S. History.
My name is Sage Booker. I'm a sophomore, and my favorite subject is Visual Arts.
My name is Gabriel Kelcher. I'm a 2018 sophomore, and my favorite class is Choir.
My name is Tyrell Terry. I'm a freshman, and my favorite class is Physics and Chemistry.
My name is William Irvin, Class of 2017. I'm a junior this year, and my favorite class is Advanced Placement in Spanish.
My name is Malik Lemmon. I'm a freshman, Class 2019, and my favorite subject is Algebra I.
My name is Dominic Bledsoe. I'm a junior, and my favorite class is Chemistry.
My name is Gonar Mar, and I'm a junior, and my favorite class is Chemistry.
I'm blessed to be the De La Salle Basketball Coach. My name is Dave Thorson, and I'm sure you're all wondering, there're not, we don't have enough people here. We're on spring break right now, and so all of our 16 years are on college trips right now, and some other underclassmen are gone as well. But I want to reiterate what our president Barry Liski had to say, that we are so proud to represent the city of Minneapolis, and I think we truly do. We look like the city of Minneapolis. We come from all of the different wards and precincts and things of that sort, and it's a pleasure to represent the city, and we're going to continue to do our best to come back here. Thank you.
I have to say, you know, as councilmember Frye noted, we had the North High Basketball Boys Basketball Team in their state championship champions last cycle. And I always like it when the tallest guy stands next to me. The picture, the visual, the visual is very, very great. So thank you, thank you. And really fun to watch you, and we are so blessed in our city to have really strong, fine leaders, mentors for our young people. And I just want to say, you guys, when you get up to this stage, your parents have spent tons and tons of time helping you and getting you to practice and all that sort of thing, and congratulations to those parents, too. Thank you. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting in Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We have a quorum, all members present this morning. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? No changes, but I am going to note, because I know we've been joined by a number of people that are friends of parks, and my intention on our agenda down towards the end, under, let's see here, under resolutions, we have the 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan Resolution, and that is a resolution proposed by myself and councilmember Goodman. And my intention today is to postpone that for one cycle, so we won't be discussing that. But we are, later on in the agenda, proceeding to introduce an ordinance that reflects that plan. So we will be moving forward with having a full discussion in the Ways and Means Committee on April 11th to fully discuss the staff direction and the questions that councilmembers had from our original presentation at Committee of the Whole. And then the introduction also includes setting a public hearing in the Committee of the Whole on April 13th. So that motion is going to be brought at the later part of the meeting, but I, knowing that we have a number of items that might take some time, if people care to stay, that's fine, but it probably won't be discussed at length, the park resolution. So I just wanted to make people aware of that. With that, then, no changes to the agenda then? A motion to adopt the agenda would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the acceptance of the regular meeting on March 18th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. And then we have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to the proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first is Committee of the Whole, that committee is chaired by the council vice president Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, ma'am chair. One item on the agenda, and this is a staff direction relating to the management response to the 2015 records management audit, and I'll move approval.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee. That committee is chaired by councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 17 items for approval this morning. Item number one is bond issuance for Mount Olivet Care Home. Items two and three, as well as four, are land sales. Item number five is a bond issuance for the YMCA. Items six and seven are approving applications for licenses, liquor business and gambling licenses. Item eight are operating conditions. Item number nine is applying to the U.S. Department of Labor for the Career Pathways for Youth Grant Application. Item number 10 is restructuring our annual pollution control billing fee ordinance. Item number 11 is the deed investment fund application. 12, 13, 14, 15 are low bids for emergency boarding and non-emergency boarding. Item 16 is a contract amendment with employee strategies. Item number 17 is a discussion item with some staff direction with regard to tax increment financing revenues for major development projects. I know that councilmember Frye has an amendment on item number 17, so perhaps we could take up that amendment first?
Councilmember Goodman has reported the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Did you want to move those items, councilmember Goodman? If you did, I missed it, so.
Sure, I'll move all items, but I was going to defer to councilmember Frye.
Frye for item 17. Okay, so let's, councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Councilmember Frye has a motion to amend item 17. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I do indeed have a motion to amend a staff direction that went through the CDRS Committee previously, well, it's on your agenda. Previously, we were developing a priority list of the top three major development projects in ranked order. Now, the amendment is, which you should have in front of you, is to use the criteria to recommend a prioritization list of major redevelopment projects in process for staff in the city council to review for future redevelopment opportunities. So, you know, the underlying purpose of this staff direction was to give staff some guidance so that they're not running in 15 different directions and that they have a concrete path forward so that we can actually tackle some of these major redevelopment projects that we presently have on the docket. And, but, you know, I did not think that it was necessary to provide a top-three rank. So it's moving away from the top-three rank and towards just using the criteria to come forward with a prioritization. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that topic.
So councilmember Frye has moved to amend item 17 with the amendment that's in front of you, and also it has a change in date for report back to the committee as well.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Everyone has that? On councilmember Frye's amendment, councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank councilmember Frye for this tweak to his original motion. We did have some discussion of this in the Ways and Means Committee, and I think councilmembers, again, who were not part of the discussion at the Community Development Committee, just thought it would be challenging to think of how, without seeing any information that talked about timelines for these very major projects, what's the return on investment, all these other kinds of things that might affect how we would prioritize them, to ask for a 1, 2, 3 list. So I really appreciate, councilmember Frye, that you kind of continued to give that direction to staff so we would get some detail back, but took away kind of that smaller box of how we wanted to see the information. So I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to thank councilmember Frye for working with me and staff to make this change. I don't think it would affect anything really in my ward, but I think this gives us more flexibility as we get more information about each of the projects that are kind of currently in development around the city to understand their timelines. It may be that, you know, there are lots of opportunities that don't even need to compete with each other. There are probably a lot of projects across the city that would even pencil from a financial, purely financial perspective. And then this leaves us open to understand how we might make sure that we can support each other as we find opportunities within wards across the city in the future. So I really appreciate it, very supportive of this change.
Need further discussion on councilmember Frye's amendment? Councilmember Gordon.
I don't know. Thank you very much. Madam President, I also want to send my appreciation for some flexibility here. I'm not on CD, and I didn't hear all of the discussion there, but of course, there are development projects, some that may be major, some that may be minor, some that may fall between, but that we're all concerned about in our own wards and throughout the city. And I think that this is worthy of having a deeper, longer discussion, and figuring out that criteria will be very, very important. So I'll certainly be supporting this.
Need further discussion on councilmember Frye's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Any other items on the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Election and Rules Committee Report. That committee is chaired by councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two items on the agenda for today. The first is a 2016 precinct and polling place designation, including a passive resolution approving the final list of precincts and polling places. And the second is a facility use agreement for the 2016 presidential election, and I would like to briefly comment on item number two. Move these two items.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Election and Rules Report, and why don't you go ahead and comment on item two?
Thank you, Madam President. On item number two, this is a really substantial step forward. In addition to having early voting throughout our city, we're going to be adding some satellite precincts in four locations, with the fifth being at City Hall. So in the future here, not only do you get to vote early, but you get to vote early, hopefully, in or near the vicinity of your own neighborhood.
Need further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on the Election and Rules Report.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee's report, and that committee is chaired by councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for consideration. The first is the Carryout Bags and Retail Establishment Ordinance. Second is a grant agreement with Mississippi Water State Management Organization, authorizing a grant agreement to accept $19,200 to hire interns. The third is authorizing a software license agreement with Don Bailey for use of the Energy Benchmarking Management System to manage data until the city's well-known enterprise land management system that we're working on can fill in the data management needs of the program. I have a substitute motion for number one, so maybe we could pull that off, and I'll move items two and three.
I'm sorry, did you say two and three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gordon has reported the Health, Community Engagement Report. We're going to pull off item one. We know we have some discussion on that. So on items two and three, is there any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items are adopted. On item one, councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Item one actually has two parts. One is the passage of the ordinance, and the other is directing staff to develop a study implementation plan for the ordinance. I would like to move a substitute ordinance, and everybody should have it before you. I also sent out an email so that you have a copy of it, and I know that there are copies available for the people here. But I'd like to talk to the minor technical changes that were made in the substitute. The, really, it's just the Enforcement Section 225.940. We had a meeting, councilmember Worsami and I had a meeting with Public Works Director and councilmember Reich, and we discussed this issue, and we looked at who was in charge of enforcement, and it was pointed out that we had the licensing official, but not the actual department head overseeing that department. So we consulted with our city attorney's office, and we redrafted it to be clear that the department heads of all the departments that would touch this would be the authorizing entity and as well as their representatives. The second change that we made is to move the effective date. There still seems to be some concern about giving a year, and we are moving in the substitute the effective date from April 22nd to June 1st, which is something that the solid waste and recycling staff seem to think is even more ideal for them. So I will move that substitute forward, and I can speak to it.
Councilmember Gordon, excuse me, has moved the ordinance that is in front of you with those changes that he mentioned, particularly in 225.940, and also the effective date change. Any discussion on that ordinance? Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Madam Chair, I don't know if councilmember Gordon wanted to speak on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Sorry. Councilmember Gordon, you did want to speak. I'm sorry. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you very much. This may be an occasion where I'll want to use up all my speeches, for all I know.
Sure.
So, absolutely. We'll do that now that the substitute's before us. This has been an interesting process, I think. I'm actually really proud of where the committee landed. So these are just minor changes that occurred, but this took us a couple of years to get here. We had a lot of involvement from staff to get here, from community members, and I think we've landed on a model that could potentially, and will, work very well for the city of Minneapolis. It's actually a model that we aren't thinking of on our own. It's a model that we have looked to other cities to, and seen where the most success has been. This is something that's been used in Seattle. It's a model that's used in Cambridge, Massachusetts. In fact, it is now the model that the West Coast cities are all using. And fortunately, we learned a lot of lessons from other cities, and we were able to take those lessons and even modify our own ordinance. We saw what happened in Austin and in Chicago, and we've made different tweaks and improvements on the ordinance here. And this is actually the ordinance that now the Northwest Grocers Association advocates for all over Northwest, in Oregon and Washington, D.C., because it's worked for them. I do understand that there have been concerns raised. There has been a lot of discussion. It's actually been very intriguing and interesting to me because most of those concerns and discussions, I think, are coming from industry and industry representatives who've come to town. And I don't know if I've been through an ordinance process that's had so much influence from industry lobbyists that have come into town, or so much money that's been spent. I can't remember that, and I've been here for about 10 or 11 years. When we had our public hearing on this, almost everybody was in favor of this ordinance. They came in and spoke strongly in favor of it, and that's pretty remarkable when you consider the amount of money that's been spent and the amount of information, and sometimes misleading information that's gone out. I think that it's been interesting that the op-ed that actually was crafted by, that appeared in the paper the other day, it was crafted by the, I think it was the executive director or the president of the American Plastic Bag Alliance, was still comparing our ordinance to Washington, D.C. And that's what we've heard all the time, something about Washington, D.C., and how their ordinance didn't work, and how their ordinance didn't work. Washington, D.C.'s model is very different from ours. We've also heard about how the 5 cent passed through that goes to the retailers that Seattle and Cambridge and other cities have used very successfully, is somehow a tax. Well, Washington, D.C. has a tax. Washington, D.C. is a very different model. Our model's different from Washington. It's different from Austin. It's different from Chicago. I actually had the opportunity, and it was quite interesting from my perspective, to meet three times with the lobbyists from Chicago, from the plastic bag industry, or the Alliance for Progressive Bags. And it was very informative because it actually helped us tighten up our model and tighten up our ordinance in terms of the exemptions, what is a reusable plastic bag, what isn't a reusable plastic bag. And one of them actually told me that our ordinance was much tighter and much clearer than anything they'd seen before. And that told me that we'd definitely been making progress. The chances for us to see the kind of mistakes that Austin did, where businesses were working around their ordinance to pass out slightly thicker plastic bags for free, and the same thing that happened in Chicago, I don't think are going to happen here, and they won't because we've taken so much time and attention with this. And we haven't only taken time and attention to try to deal with and work with the out-of-town lobbyists who've come here to work on this, but we took an incredible amount of time to work with our staff. We put a staff team together, and we worked on this. We met several times with it. There were some differences about this. Some people like a fee for both. Some people aren't sure if the fee's high enough. We certainly took the lead on that, but we landed on something that our staff is comfortable with, and they think that they can work. And what we also heard from our staff often is, well, it's obviously working in over 100 cities right now. Somebody's solved a lot of these problems anyway. If there are problems and concerns, it's not like we're making up something new. And that's why I think it's key that we look at the model we've developed and we stick with it. up our ordinance in terms of the exemptions, what is a reusable plastic bag, what isn't a reusable plastic bag. And one of them actually told me that our ordinance was much tighter and much clearer than anything they'd seen before. And that told me that we'd definitely been making progress. The chances for us to see the kind of mistakes that Austin did where businesses were working around their ordinance to pass out slightly thicker plastic bags for free, and the same thing that happened in Chicago, I don't think are going to happen here, and they won't because we've taken so much time and attention with this. And we haven't only taken time and attention to try to deal with and work with the out-of-town lobbyists who've come here to work on this, but we took an incredible amount of time to work with our staff. We put a staff team together, and we worked on this. We met several times with it. There were some differences about this. Some people like a fee for both. Some people aren't sure if the fee's high enough. We certainly took the lead on that, but we landed on something that our staff is comfortable with, and they think that they can work. And what we also heard from our staff often is, well, it's obviously working in over 100 cities right now. Somebody's solved a lot of these problems anyway. If there are problems and concerns, it's not like we're making up something new. And that's why I think it's key that we look at the model we've developed and we stick with it. I'll also note that we met with businesses. We put out the offer and made presentations to businesses, organizations. I want to give a special thanks to the Lake Street Council that helped us facilitate, and also with our own business licensing staff. We went to the advisory group. We went there three different times. We got input. We gathered information. It helped us shape the ordinance as well. You'll notice there's exemptions in our ordinance. We defined those exemptions, very similar to what Seattle did. There might be some differences, but a lot of that was in response to the businesses. And actually, what we got mostly was, well, when is it going to take effect? Will there be help for us? Will you provide signs so that our customers are clear about what's happening? Will there be any technical assistance? Mostly questions about, how can you help me as a business do the right thing and get this done? It was very interesting. One of the last meetings we had was a meeting with immigrant businesses on Lake Street, and we actually had translation going on, and we had a lot of communication about this. And we heard from one of the convenience store operators about how often he hears from his customers complaining about all the plastic bags and how much they want to have alternatives and how much they want to do this. And we also heard about how this five cent fee is actually going to mean to this business that this is probably going to actually bring in some revenue, and it's not going to cost him anything when he looks at, he won't have to be buying all these plastic bags that he buys all the time anymore anyway. And I believe that's actually the reason why the Northwest Grocers Association now endorses this model, because they've actually seen it actually works out better, and it's a support for the grocery business instead of something that's going to harm them. I am excited that we've landed on something. I know that the city isn't united on it, but I also know that by and large, people are enthusiastic and are ready to make this move. We've seen in other cities when it's happened. I just got an email this morning from somebody. It looks like it's going to be hard at first, but within a year or two, people can't even imagine what it was like or remember what it was like with all those plastic bags that they had to haul around, put in their house in boxes and bags they saw blowing around. It worked so easily that people end up feeling better about their shopping experience and being in their city. I'm really glad that we've chosen this model that can be replicated as well. There's already interest from city council members in St. Paul and St. Louis Park looking at how they can proceed with something like this. And I think if we can take some leadership here, and we can say that we can do this, we're going to get an enthusiastic response from our businesses, from our residents, from people who visit the city, and we're going to have other cities nearby and probably far away saying, well, how can we also do this as well? So I hope people will support this, and I appreciate your time.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have amendment that I'd like to move to this, and then I'd like to speak to that as well. It is in front of you. Basically, first off, I want to say, hey, plastic bags, seeing these things tumbling around and getting stuck in trees. And so what I appreciate is the effort to try to reduce our litter in the city and to end up, in doing so, reduce the amount of plastic material that breaks down and enters our rivers and our streams. One of the concerns that I've had about the original ordinance is its actual effectiveness in doing that. If we look at what the Pollution Control Agency, individual staff member who came here to testify told us, was that we don't have a lot of good data around litter in our city. And if you look at other comparable cities such as in Texas, plastic bags are about 2% of the entire litter stream. I'll note that we're not actually banning all plastic bags. You can still get them at carryout places or fast food restaurants. You can get them for newspapers. You can get them for dry cleaners. What we're really talking about here is the carryout bags from our grocery stores. So what I ended up doing is going out for an hour to see what kind of litter we could find and do an inventory of it. I'll just put these up here. We've got, in this one miscellaneous, it runs up to about here, here's our paper. People can see what we were able to collect here. In total, we've got 498 pieces of litter. Actually, I would say cigarette butts are the number one type of litter that's out there. Here's a bunch of different plastic lids. Here's pop cans. Here's bottles and cans. We also have fast food containers, coffee cups. Here's little cigarellos and other type of litter from cigarettes. And then of plastic bags, this is what we were able to find. Of our count of 498 items, we managed to find seven plastic bags. I would actually say in terms of plastic bags, there are probably less than seven total because of the breakup. So what I'm proposing here with this is to go after 100% of the litter out there. Because as you can see by all that I just showed you, there's a lot of litter. That's just one hour. And now, unfortunately, I feel broken. I feel like I can't unsee litter everywhere I go. It's amazing. It's like somebody let loose a landfill across the city and spread it out. It's everywhere. It's so ubiquitous. And that stuff is ending up in our rivers and it's ending up in our streams, and I want to do something about it. At the same time, I recognize that, you know, businesses, some businesses want to offer the option of giving out paper bags for free because it's part of their model. I've told a number of colleagues, when I went in to buy my engagement ring for my fiance, they bake fresh cookies there, and they say, would you like a softer? You know, it's part of their experience that they do that. And so for retailers like Lunds and Kowalski's, if it's part of their experience that they have Bag Boy there, Bag Girl there, that they want to give out a bag without sitting there telling customers, well, we're going to have to wait and see how many you get and count them up, I think that's fine as long as they are willing to, and under this amendment, contribute towards litter cleanup across the city for each one of those bags. And so that's what I'm proposing. This is, to me, the best environmental outcome. It's an outcome that is going to still ban plastic bags. It's going to still reduce paper bags at the lion's share, the majority of stores that are going to say, well, we don't want to pay five cents into a litter fund anyways. It's going to give businesses the option rather than a mandate, and they'll have the option of contributing to a litter cleanup fund and having a better customer experience. And at the same time, it's going to fund litter cleanup across the city. Now, the concerns I've heard about this in terms of why somebody might not want to do this is that this ordinance is about doing other things aside from just litter. It's about the carbon footprint. Well, that's fair, but one single bunch of asparagus has 600 times the carbon footprint of plastic bags. My drive-in today, which was about 10 minutes long, generated the equivalent carbon footprint of about 75 plastic bags. I know it's about the HERC incinerator. Some people have said that. I don't like the HERC incinerator belching out these pollutants, but, you know, when we reduce our tonnage in the city, they just drive more tonnage in from the suburbs to the HERC facility. I've heard it said that it's about the MRF facility and clogging up the gears there when they're doing recycling. That's true. That's a fair point. But there's still, again, lots and lots of plastic bags out there. We've got a lot of exemptions built into this, and there's a lot of plastic films in general. And so when I ask my constituents, what is this about to you? What do you care about with this ban on plastic bags? They say litter, litter. That's what they're telling me is their issue, and they send in to just even exemplify it. I know Councilmember Gordon's staff member continually posts pictures of tumble bags online, stuck in trees and along fence lines, and that's the issue for people that I'm hearing, is that it's about litter. So I want to do something that's going to go after 100% of the litter, not 1% of the litter. And so I hope that my colleagues are willing to support this amendment.
Any discussion on Councilmember Johnson's amendment? Councilmember Worsami?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to speak against Councilmember Johnson's amendment. And the reason for, and I think he has a very good argument with regards to litter, but I think that's not a substitute to the ordinance that myself and Councilmember Gordon brought forth. I think the litter issue is something that we need to discuss. Recycling is something that we need to discuss. However, and I thank his efforts for walking around and cleaning up some of our streets. However, I think he must be walking around different areas than where I live, because where I live, there is a lot of plastic bags flying around. And in terms of, so I do support his overall objective. However, I think this complicates what we were trying to do. We put a lot of work in, bring your own bag ordinance, and the staff, even staff has concerns about this amendment that Councilmember Johnson brought forth because it's just something that came out of the blue. We haven't studied it, and I would like my colleagues not to support the motion.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just say that if there are any staff concerns, I certainly haven't heard them about this, and I don't understand why it would complicate things when you're giving businesses the option to do this. It seems pretty uncomplicated. If businesses choose not to do this, if, which by the way, most of them probably will just say, I'm going to pass the fee on to my customers, then they're just following the ordinance that's already here. So this isn't really a complicated thing for them to have this option, and it also gives us the opportunity to actually tackle the whole of the litter stream. And I have also talked with our city attorney's office. They helped with drafting this, so there's no concerns about the legality of this or anything like that. And so I don't see any issue with this.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the effort and the concern about litter, but I think it's expanding us off of the model that I think is so well and it's so tight that we've already developed. I'm also concerned that this is going to create a kind of loophole for more paper bags. Definitely at the public hearing, definitely at the committee level, that was one of the things we wanted to do, was to make sure that we closed any loopholes to promote more paper bags. Whereas paper bags aren't necessarily as harmful at the end of their life cycle because they do decompose and because they can be recycled easily and are already, that isn't such a big issue, but it's at the end of their life cycle where there are still major impacts in the manufacturing production. And what we're looking at doing is getting this alternative of people bringing their own environmentally friendly bags to shop with, or deciding they can carry it out with their hands to the car or whatever, and not bagging everything so much. So I'm worried this will create that loophole. I also did have an opportunity just yesterday to try to get feedback from staff about this issue, and I can share the response that I got back with all my colleagues. But they, one of the lines that stood out for me was they said, having the city enforce the requirement that a third-party retail store provides the appropriate amount of funding to a nonprofit would be extremely difficult, if not impossible. And right, so I think that this would get too complicated, and there'd be other requirements, and I will forward this on and make sure that all my colleagues have received it, because there is more detail to that email too. But there are staff concerns, and I think it probably hasn't been vetted with all of the staff yet. I also can appreciate the need to address concerns about litter, and I think that I'm willing, it sounds like along with my colleague Councilmember Worsami, to try to look at this as more of a holistic approach to attack from a different angle, and maybe even in the mayor's budget next year or something like that. And we prefer that rather than attaching it to this ordinance.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Johnson's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
No.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
No.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are seven ayes and six nays.
That amendment passes. Then back to the substitute, Councilmember Gordon's substitute. Any further discussion on that? Councilmember Worsami?
I just wanted to talk on the main motion.
And that is the, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gordon's substitute is in front of us.
Okay.
But it's just those minor changes. So I think if you speak on this, you're speaking essentially on the main motion.
Okay. I mean, the reason why we brought this ordinance was to limit the distribution of single-use plastic bags and paper bags in the city of Minneapolis. As you might be aware, from production to disposal, single-use paper bags impact our communities, water, and climate. Plastic bags require a large amount of electricity to manufacture, and plastic resin is being found in our water ecosystems more frequently. Most plastic bags are never recycled. Instead, many end up littering our neighborhoods and collecting along our waterways where they will never decompose. A ban on plastic bags and a five-cent fee on paper bags will encourage the public to bring their own reusable bags while protecting our environment and water in the city of Minneapolis. I also support the wholesale evaluation of our city's recycling and litter cleanup programs. However, this should not be in addition to the ordinance and not a substitute. And I am disappointed that my colleagues took the route of watering down, the bring your own ordinance back. One of the arguments against our ordinance was that it was too simple, but it was Leonardo da Vinci who said that simplicity is the ultimate sophistication, that this was very simple. We were banning plastic bags, and we were charging for paper bags, that we were going to make it easier for people to reuse their own bags. And it was also important when we met some of the immigrant small businesses, that there was a grocery store owner who was originally from Mexico who said that when he was growing up, his family would use a reusable bag, that it was part of their culture. And I think that when we looked at the city of Seattle, Washington, and Cambridge, Massachusetts, that the plastic bag ban that they had, which was similar to the one we were proposing, had a dramatic effect on the waste, or the paper waste that they had. So again, thank you to Councilmember Gordon for the hard work he did, and it was quite disappointing that we somehow watered down the ordinance.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to save some time to speak on the main motion, but, you know, with regards to the substitute, I just wanted to ask the question of the city attorney. You know, is it typical for us to have four different departments do the enforcement or regulation of a specific ordinance? Do we have any other examples of that within our ordinances?
Ms. Segal?
Madam Chair and Councilmember Yang, I'm thinking there are some where, for example, the police department and regulatory services work together with housing inspections, and there may be some other examples. I'll think about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. You know, in this situation, there are four departments that are supposed to be doing the regulation and enforcement. But, you know, to the main issue here, I just want to say, I mean, protecting the environment is something that we all deeply care about, but in the way that we're going about this, I cannot support the ordinance. I just don't think this is good policy. The enforcement and regulatory aspects of this ordinance change have not been worked out very well, creating legislative victory, but no means of making sure businesses actually comply with the law. City staff are going to spend anywhere from eight months or so figuring out how to enforce this ordinance as opposed to any number of critical and ongoing projects we are facing that we could work on. The loopholes and exceptions in this ordinance are large, and they, in some ways, I don't think they benefit us. My office has heard from businesses, and the businesses are uniformly against this change. Further, most of them report no outreach or engagement by the proponents of this measure. We don't need to add another unnecessary cost of regulatory hassle to these businesses. Neighborhood stores will feel the hurt because they have to absorb the higher cost of paper bags, even with this, the fees. I supported Andrew Johnson's change, and I'm glad, you know, we don't have it anymore. If this ordinance were to pass, thinking about just how much business we would force to go out of Minneapolis. A study in Austin, Texas states that one store lost over $60,000 per week to surrounding stores that did not have this ordinance in place. This alone would put severe pressure on Broadway's Cub Food Store, the only grocery store on the North Side that is of that scale, if they were to lose this type of revenue to surrounding communities, not to mention the pressure this would put on all retailers in Ward 5. The constituents that I represent, who have contacted me about this, have generally been against this ban. Although aimed at working towards a zero-waste city, this ordinance will make it harder for the people I represent to comply with the city's new efforts in organic recycling, although the ordinance exempts, one second here. The alternatives presented by advocates here aren't an improvement, in my view. Cloth appearing reusable bags, which are just plastic, are not recyclable, which harbor disease and bacteria potentially. Paper bags are more environmentally taxing than plastic bags. Everyone who once reused their plastic bags for pet waste, diapers, and other needs will now have to buy plastic bags. The problem with thin plastic gumming up recycling equipment, yes, it will still be there because this will take out at least 10% of plastics. More than 85% of thin plastic film, like the stuff around paper towels and shrink-wrapped grocery items, will continue to be in our waste system after the ban is imposed. We look to the city of Austin, Texas. We look to the city of Austin, Texas.[1775.86]